Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pitts County Planning Commission Meeting, June the 2nd, 2020. We'll go with the roll call. Mrs. Meese?
Present.
Mrs. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Harker?
Present.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Let the record show eight present, zero absent. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All citizens of the United States, join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. No one has signed up to address the commissions. Anyone here tonight wish to address this board on anything other than what's on the agenda? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, do you have another motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as been presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Stone, the agenda be approved as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight four, zero against. Approval of the minutes made the fifth, 2020. Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes made the fifth, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Haymore, second by Mr. Horn, and minutes be approved. The package, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight four, zero against. Chairman, report. As I said, the protocol for the board is to remove our masks so we can talk decently. When you come to the stand, the citizens, you may remove the mask if you want to address us. It's up to you, so we appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, for showing the article five, Division seven of Pitts County Zoning Order, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said order and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this supporting task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare assumptions of Pitts County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pitts County and citizens and its posterior. Anyone here to speak to the Board of zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At seven oh four, case R twenty dash oh one two is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash twenty dash zero one two, Bueller Robertson, Robinson, has petitioned to rezone a total of 2.22 acres located on Mill Creek Road in the Vanister Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agriculture district to combine with her adjacent parcels of land zoned A one. The staff summary is enclosed in the board package. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rich Armstrong is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Armstrong, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissions other than what Ms. Ragsdale's already?
No, it's all pretty much agricultural property in that area, and it's adjacent to land that she has. She was doing some reconfiguration since she was preparing to try to sell it. From my understanding, she's got another contract here recently to sell the whole thing to one buyer, so to get the map approved and do what she requested, we're gonna have to have a rezone. So I think it's consistent with the area, but do you have questions at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Armstrong? Does anyone here wish to address this board on this case? We do not have opportunity to sign up. If not, at seven oh five, case R dash twenty dash oh one two is closed to public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in the case of R twenty dash zero one two, I don't have any questions about this case, so I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommends this to the Board of Supervisors that it be approved.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, we recommend to the Board of Supervisors zoning be changed from R one to A one. Is this a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Meese, any discussion? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the roll table?
Mr. Miley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case R dash twenty dash oh one two by a vote of eight four, zero against. We recommend to the Board of Supervisors to zone and be changed from R one to A one. Seven oh six, case R dash twenty dash oh one three is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash twenty dash zero one three, Jeffrey and Wendy Davis have petitioned to rezone a total of 3.2 acres located on Connie Road in the Cowans Grettna Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district to allow for a second dwelling on the property for a family member. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Davis is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Davis, or Mrs. Davis, will you come to the podium right there? Good evening and welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Ragsdale's already presented to us?
No, we're just a close knit family, and we wanna try and keep everybody together, and so being able to have another dwelling will all fix the village. Can we keep the village together?
Any questions for Mr. Davis? No one has signed up? Anyone here wish to address the commissions on this case? We do not have opportunity to sign up. If not, seven oh eight, case R dash twenty dash oh one three is closed to public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Meese?
Mr. Miley, I did visit. Although it's a lot of arms around, it's also A one in the back of the laundry room now. No one has called me for opposition to their call against R dash twenty dash zero thirteen. I make a motion that this board recommended the Board of Supervisors to request the Zoning.
Second. Second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Horn, we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to zone and be changed from R one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the roll?
Mr. Miley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case R dash twenty dash oh one three by a vote of eight four, zero against. We recommend to the Board of Supervisors to zone and be changed from R one to A one. At seven oh nine, case S dash twenty dash oh oh five is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S dash twenty dash zero zero five, Timothy and Rhonda Thompson have petitioned for a special use permit on 1.03 acres located off of Blue Ridge Drive in the Saint River Election District to allow for placement of a single wide mobile home to be used for their daughter's residence. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mrs. Thompson is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Thompson? Good evening, welcome, Ms. Thompson. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Ragsdale's already presented to us?
Not really. Our daughter and future husband just start out in life, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to start off behind us.
There you go.
Any questions? No one has signed up? Or does anyone here wish to address the board on this case? We do not have opportunity to sign up. If not, at seven ten, case R S dash twenty dash oh five is closed to public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Hawke?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval of this special use permit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hawke, second by Mr. Dudley to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit be issued for placement of a single wide mobile home for that dollar address. Any questions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the roll?
Mr. Miley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh five by a vote of eight four, zero against. We recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit be allowed for placement of a single wide mobile home for that dollar address. Seven eleven, case S dash twenty dash oh oh six is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh six, John Haddam has petitioned for a special use permit on 0.91 acres located on Lakeside Road in the Cowans Grettna Election District to allow replacement of a single wide mobile home to be used for his personal residence. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Orvath is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Orvath, will you come forward? Good evening and welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Ragsdale's already presented to us?
Uh, no, really, that's my first brand new home. Start my retirement.
There you go.
Any questions for Mr. Orvath? No one has signed up? Does anyone here wish to address the commissions on anything? That did not have opportunity to sign up for this case? If not, at seven twelve, case S dash twenty dash oh oh six is closed to public hearing. Thank you. Ms. Meese?
Mr. Miley, in the case eight dash twenty dash zero zero six, I have received no opposition, so therefore I make a recommendation for this board to replace the special use permit to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Haymore, that recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit be issued. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Miley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh six by a vote of eight four, zero against. We recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals a special use permit be issued for placement of a single wide mobile home for his personal residence. At seven thirteen, case S dash twenty dash oh oh seven is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh seven, Linda Holly has petitioned for a special use permit on .69 acres located on Tiesquees Road in the Chatham Learys Election District for a beauty shop. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Shelby Clark is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Clark? Will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Ragsdale's already presented to us?
No, I'm just that I'm slowing down, and this would be kind of easy to my retirement, to walk next door and do work is too far time.
Any questions for Ms. Clark?
You're opening up a beauty shop. Is there anything you can do for any of these guys around here?
Do a lot.
You don't have a magic wand, though, I can tell you.
Twenty-five years I've been doing that.
Uh-oh.
I'm just, I mean, it's twenty-five million comedians out of work, and he's trying to be funny.
Really? You know, it's been kind of stale, so I thought I would bring it on.
Really?
And it ain't nothing you can do for him either. Hey, I'm sorry.
He's got that problem.
No one has signed up to speak for this case? Anyone here wish to address it, to do it? Ms. Clark, I want to thank you for meeting with me up there and going over your plans.
Yes, sir.
That's what she said. At seven fifteen, case S dash twenty dash oh oh seven is closed to public hearing. I met with Ms. Clark at the residence. This building needs, she's got already have a building permit issued to renovate it, and it's quite, she ran into quite a bit of work and expense to get this to meet ADA standards. And so she says, hold it. Let's stop right here. Let's get the special use permit before I invest any more money into the building, which I agree is a very wise thing to do.
Smart move, yep. Very good.
And just for the history, the past thirty years, within a half a mile of this residence, it has been two beauty shops and homes that has operated, and they have since closed due to the age of the retirement. And she has been with the health department and brought, know all the standards that needs to be brought up with the buyers that we have now. So I recommend that we recommend for a special use permit. So somebody can make a motion.
I'll take care of that. Mr. Chairman, in case S dash twenty dash double oh seven for Linda M. Holly, as she's petitioning the Board of Zoning Appeals, I make a motion that we send this to the Board of Zoning Appeals to be passed? Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Horn, recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit for a beauty shop be issued. Any discussions?
She still didn't answer my question.
Ms. Ragsdale, you just hold it up.
Buying books in the store when we get...
Mr. Miley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh seven by a vote of eight four, zero against.
We recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit for a beauty shop be issued. Thank you, Ms. Horn. At seven seventeen, case S dash twenty dash oh oh five is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S dash twenty dash oh oh eight, Monroe Solar Partners LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 62.12 acres located on Climax Road in the Cowans Grettna Election District for a utility scale solar energy facility. The staff summary and conditions submitted are enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the representatives with Monroe Solar Partners LLC are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Simon? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the Planning Commission members. My name's Chris Gordon. I'm representing EDF Renewables and the applicants of the proposed solar project. I have provided a brief presentation, if you don't mind following along, to kind of give you some more information about the project. Monroe Solar Project will be the, is being developed through ODEC and Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative, and it will be the first cooperative dedicated solar energy facility to provide 100% of its output directly to the Mecklenburg Electric members. James Wright is also here this evening. He's the senior manager of power supply at ODEC, and he's gonna speak, if you don't mind, he can speak in a few minutes to the partnership between EDF Renewables and ODEC and Mecklenburg Electric. If you look to the first page, the general overview of the project, the location of the project is east of the residence at 880 Climax Road, which is owned by Mr. Joseph Williams. He also lives on the part of project parcel. The project will encompass only one parcel of land, and the anticipated footprint is about 25 acres and will if not, will not exceed 35 acres. The capacity is 2.2 megawatts AC. It is a small project compared to others proposed in the county because of it, because it is sized to meet the electricity needs of Mecklenburg Electric customers only. The interconnection point of this project will be, is proposed to be on Climax Road to the southeast, southwestern corner of the parcel, and that's about a thousand feet to the north of the Climax substation, which is operated by Mecklenburg Electric, and that is the substation where this project will be providing power to. The next page shows our conceptual site plan. This just gives you an example of how the facility may be oriented throughout the property. The proposed project has been developed in accordance with the Pitts County Solar Ordinance. The property lines shown in black, as well as the applicable setbacks, are shown in orange. The maximum height of the solar panels will be 15 feet or less, with the exception of a small diameter weather station pole that may exceed 15 feet. Proposed gravel access is off of Shell Horse Road, which is a private gravel driveway owned by our property owner, Mr. Joseph Williams. No substation will be required to be constructed as a part of this project. It will be interconnected into existing Mecklenburg Electric infrastructure. The fencing is shown in green around the arrays. We're proposing to use fixed not agricultural fence as opposed to chain link in order to assist in keeping with the rural character of this surrounding community. Ancillary equipment is shown at the end to the north of the road there, and that includes inverters, transformers, and optional battery storage equipment. Visual impacts of the project will be mitigated through the low visual profile of the facility, the maximum equipment height, the necessary setbacks, and existing vegetation, which you can see, is shown in green around the perimeter of the property area, of the project area. Directed to the west of the project, there is an approximately 100 foot wide stand of existing trees that may extend along the full extent of Climax Road, which would therefore limit potential views from the public right away. Supplemental vegetative plantings are proposed in the blue hatch areas as shown on the north and eastern side of the property area. Surface water features are shown as well. There are three ponds on the property. There's a minimum 50 foot buffer around those ponds, so no surface water or water sources are expected to be impacted. We have conducted due diligence investigations, and I have members of our environmental consulting firm here with me tonight to speak to any additional questions you may have. The next page gives you an idea of the project timeline. We have a proposed, an aggressive schedule to get this facility constructed. We're obviously in the permitting phase now. We reached out to the neighboring community and held a live webinar in lieu of a community open house due to the current guidelines on large gatherings. The event was held last Wednesday online, and about a half dozen local residents participated in that event. Later this year, we anticipate final design, engineering, and construction of the facility with the hope to have this solar facility up and running by early 2021. I'm gonna pause real quick and let James from ODEC speak to the relationship, like I said, between EDF Renewables, ODEC, Old Dominion Electric Cooperative, and Mecklenburg Electric.
Good evening, welcome.
So I work for ODEC, which is owned in part by Mecklenburg and several other co-ops. ODEC's role is to provide the generation, and Mecklenburg does the wires business. So we partnered with EDF, actually last year, to do a lot of local projects directly for the co-ops. So our partnership really is different because it's centered on providing Mecklenburg local power. Mecklenburg is a not-for-profit electric co-op formed in 1938. They exist to serve members, provide electric service. This project will be the first co-op dedicated renewable facility in Mecklenburg's territory. One thing that differentiates this project is that it's sized and located, at a smaller size and locally located, so that it really reinforces the grade locally, and it reduces the reliance on the transmission lines to import power from other areas. It's gonna connect into the existing substations, so there's no new substations that have to be built or accommodated. The cost that we lock in is a fixed cost, so it's gonna reduce the kinds of volatility that you might have seen in the past, where when fuel prices go up and go down, you're subject to that. This is gonna lock in a fixed price for the solar, it's a low price. And this particular project will provide enough electricity to power 400 homes.
Thank you, James.
Any questions for Mr. Armstrong?
I'll finish up. James, I did just wanna kind of run through some general, in addition to the benefits that James mentioned, you know, benefits of solar projects in general. They provide clean renewable energy source without using water, creating emissions, producing waste products, and a low visual profile, quiet operations, making it a good neighbor to the community. It's a passive use of land, and it will, the facility will place little to no demand on county infrastructure or services such as roads, water, sewer, or the county school system. Other economic benefits, the county during construction include are in the form of contracting opportunities. We try to utilize local labor as much as practical, practi- practicable, to build valuable solar experience to the local workforce. And last but not least, this is a temporary use of land project because it's built driven, oh, using German steel posts as opposed to extensive use of concrete and outer foundations or excavations. At the end of the project life, which is about approximately 25 to 35 years, the entire project can be removed, and the land can be returned to its previous agricultural use. Lastly, I'd like to highlight EDF Renewables' experience and our qualifications for a project like this. We are market leading, independent power producer with over 35 years of experience. We've developed over 16 gigawatts of renewable projects over the, throughout the country, and so we do have the expertise and the resources to develop and build a successful project for Mecklenburg Electric, ODEC, and the community of the community. This will conclude my presentation. There are some additional slides in your packets for your review. They include some pictures of representative project equipment that may be used, and like I said, I have members, colleagues here with me, and members of our consulting firm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for the opportunity and consideration. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Is this your first project in Pitts, I mean, in Virginia?
This is, this is our lead project. We currently have approximately five to eight other additional projects all throughout the ODEC territory. This is our first project in Mecklenburg Electric territory, and first one in Pitts County. Our only one in Pitts County.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Ragsdale, he was talking about the fence. Does what he's proposing, does that meet with the special guidelines?
It will have to meet the guidelines of the fence. That would be reviewed in the preliminary stages after this.
Could you go back over what you're gonna substitute instead of the chain link fence? What were you gonna?
We like to use a fixed not agricultural fence. It will still meet the minimum height requirements, but we feel it fits better with the rural agricultural landscape as opposed, and looks a little less institutional.
Woven wire, essentially. Fixed not, I had heard that was fixed not.
Yeah, there's a picture of it in the back there. On page 10, sustainable design, it's a little, it's a little blurred out with the imagery, but that is a picture of the fixed not.
Page 10?
Yeah.
I've got, I've got the panels on mine.
It's in front of the panels. You can barely see it, but it's in front of the panels.
My question is, does this gonna meet the county guidelines?
It's in front of it.
Well, we can understand why y'all don't see it, 'cause you're sitting there and hold.
Who's it collecting up? The blocks, any fixed fences, square blocks or circle?
Yeah, it's like, you know, an open, open kind of agricultural wire.
Yeah.
Also, then on the top.
That's right. Goat wire.
So it's up to you, as long as the height requirements, it could meet requirements. Normally, we require chain link, but, you know, if that's something that you place in your conditions in the past, it's not something that co-reQUIRES.
Just wanted, just wanted to be sure, you have the public.
Ms. Ma, I have a question.
Ms. Mace.
Can you say more about comparison? Why not the change that you mentioned, just because it's agriculture environment community executive?
We typically like to do it, yeah, for that reason, just to keep with the character of the surrounding community and as opposed to kind of a institutional-looking chain link fence with barbed wire.
But as it ages, would that would be the same effect as a chain link fence?
It would be maintained.
Yeah, perhaps we can.
I have to wonder, the requirements of the special use, they have to maintain vegetation, keep the vegetation off the chain link fence.
Right.
That's what I'm requiring. Any other questions for?
I had one, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your time. We had just a letter written to us concerning runoff issues. I was wondering if you or one of your environmental people could address maybe the soil type and pass use of the land and any erosion issues that might arise from your project.
Sure. The current use is cattle grazing. The thing with the solar projects, because they utilize a driven post into the ground, there's fairly minimal site work that's required, so therefore there won't be as much runoff risk as a standard development.
I guess the dispersion of the concentration of rainwater.
Oh, right off of the panels?
Yes.
Yes, so we're not proposing to add very minimal impervious surfaces. There's concrete paths below the inverters and the transformer. However, everything else will simply run off the panels and directly onto the ground surface.
At about how high off the ground of those panels?
Maximum fifteen.
They're no closer than thirty-six inches or so. Five feet, five to six feet.
Okay. I was just envisioning, I know I have, on my house, part of my house doesn't have a gutter on the back, and it sits about eight feet off the ground, and there's a trench there. And I think that's, just from what I can tell from this, a constant added concentration of runoff water. I didn't know if you guys had any way with the topo map of this, looks like it would facilitate maybe some runoff control measures. I didn't know if you guys added anything, or is this gonna be the existing pasture that's already there?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having to speak to this. She has a little more experience with the stormwater runoff, but I believe a stormwater pollution prevention plan will be required.
Good evening. I'm Kate Scott Morris. I'm here behalf of the applicant. I work for Environmental Consulting and Technology. I'm a land use planner, but the grow solar project will need to comply with our, the local stormwater erosion control plans, which we submitted at the local level and approved at the local level, and that will be an iterative process between the applicant and the county. And then it will also, this project will also be subject to a state of Virginia stormwater prevention control plan all through the local and then the delegated authority at the state level. So we're still subject to all of those. So as we move forward in this process, that will be called as record, and we'd be privy to those plans and approvals from the community.
Okay.
DEQ has to actually approve the final draft of it, am I correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
You're gonna use an existing substation, correct?
That's correct.
That's cool.
It will be, it will connect via a line tap on Climax Road, and then the electricity will be transferred down to the Climax Substation.
Okay, be like a step down then?
So your possible battery storage is just an option? Is that in the planning, or is it just an option?
We would like to leave it as an option. It is, it's not, it's currently not, not being considered for this project, or for permitting purposes, so we didn't have to come back if a system was to be implemented at a later date. We wanted to have it included in our permit application.
One other comment I'd like to make, I've been involved with two solar sites in my district within the last couple of years, and you made mention to using local labor sources and so forth. I haven't seen that. I've seen teams from Pennsylvania, I've seen teams from Texas, but quite frankly, I haven't seen a darn person from that district, my district, or anywhere in this county on sites.
Sure.
If you're gonna use them, use them.
We spoke with our EPC department just the other day, as well as our O and M Director. He encourages use of local electrical contractors from the construction phase on, just so that they have a knowledge of the project, so that, you know, they're easily deployed to the site if something were to go wrong. They obviously, they choose to use local labor as much as possible, and that goes for landscaping and mowing, keeping up with the grounds as well. It's simply cost, more cost effective for us to do that.
Okay. And I'll say too, some of the local even electrical contractors, and I'll add to what Brian was saying as well. Their trucks may say Pennsylvania, Ohio, or something like that, but they're local guys. A lot of times they use the home office address on the truck, but they're actually contractors for the most, for the most part. I know I, you know, I was with the Power Company for twenty-eight years, and I've seen that, you know, through the years, but, you know, mostly they do absolutely use the local labor on this, so.
Ms. Mace?
Mr. Gordon, how many people will be served in the Climax community?
Approximately four hundred homes can be average, the electricity use for an average of about four hundred average homes will be served by this electricity, which is, I believe, more, Climax Road Substation does supply electricity to more homes than that, but this will supplement the power, the electricity needs of those.
I think it's a good project because so many times the co-ops are the member-owned, and they have to buy power from IOUs that make power, and this is something that's homemade, it's pretty neat. I like it, and I'm all for it, so, thank you.
I'm not clear about the fence. Is, I know the chain anchor fence is a lot stronger and heavier wire. It doesn't rust out now. Is this, you're talking about using agricultural wire here? There's a square opening in it, or barbed wire?
No, there will not be barbed wire. The goal is to not use that, and obviously we will modify that per the county requirements as needed, but like I said, we prefer to use the agricultural style without barbed wire.
You're talking, have you ever seen it?
I have, yes.
Is it opening square or round?
Yeah, square.
Square, okay.
Yes.
What we call pig wire.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon.
Ms. Mace, please.
Y'all did just plenty of job on your webinar. I heard.
Thank you for attending. I appreciate it, ma'am.
Is that the only community outreach that you're going to?
That's what I was thinking.
And then the people in that area know, because a lot of people don't have access to that period, and therefore they probably would like to know more about the project. Y'all anticipating visiting in the neighborhood, I know before with COVID-19 virus, that's not easy to go, but previously we've had companies did have the community meeting, but that was before virus presence. So I'm just wondering how many people know that it's coming into the neighborhood, and maybe the neighborhood had questions that can add. Are you planning on interacting into the community in one?
We don't have plans at this point to conduct further, you know, canvassing, so to speak, mostly because of, you know, like what you mentioned with the COVID-19. I don't think anyone would feel comfortable having a stranger come and knock on our door during these times. I have spoken with, hung with a landowner across Climax Road, answered some questions to him. I know Mr. Williams, the property owner, has spoken with one of his neighbors and tried to answer a question directly. However, that has been the extent of our outreach. One of the adjacent property owners is Mr. Williams' daughter, and I spoke with her, she said that she, she's a neighbor as well. But at the end of the day, there's really only maybe half a dozen adjacent property owners that are not Mr. Williams' or his immediate parents.
And word gets out, just to make sure that the good word is getting out, you know?
Absolutely.
Goes through ten people.
Yeah, yeah, and I, yeah.
Give the correct information.
And I've been encouraging Mr. Williams and his daughter to, you know, if they have questions, please pass them on the information, so we can answer to them instead of working out.
That's in my district, County's red, and I have not received any opposition thus far.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Shull, I have several people sign up, so you'll get to come back and rebuttal.
Thank you.
I hope I can answer some correctly. Laura Burris.
Laura, there it is.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I own five acres across from this site. I own a residential home in Corwin, New Hampshire. It's completely across the street from this. It's a beautiful, beautiful, everyone's farm after you see those trees on the side. This is where they wanna put that. I'm all for solar energy, but I mean nothing. All these pamphlets y'all have, I mean nothing. The only reason I knew anything was y'all sent me a letter, the plan committee, and a little paper sign. They said they outreach, they didn't even walk across the street to ask me anything. They didn't tell me if they were cutting down trees, if they had here, here. They could've sent us each one of these pamphlets. They didn't care. It was about money. I'm from Mecklenburg, I'm from solar, but I'm out for them, destroying our rural existence, cutting down all the trees that you said they're not going to, but I didn't know. And in reference to that webinar, we don't have internet. There's no internet on Climax. We sit out there very rural. We wish we had internet. If the solar panels come with internet, that'd be great. But there's no way, if you're gonna have a webinar and everybody's gonna know that. There's a lot of people out there that don't know that. I've been nervous wrecked the last couple of weeks, I didn't know what to think. They're gonna plow down, they're gonna, they didn't have me outreach. I didn't get these fancy pictures or anything, and I am directly across from this. Mr. Williams, I'm all for him doing solar panels. I'm all for the project from Mecklenburg, wholeheartedly. But I don't wanna have to go outside and sit in my front yard and instead of seeing the beautiful trees, see a bunch of fences and solar panels. If they'd answered these questions, they'd gone around and scouted the neighborhood like they said, maybe we wouldn't have felt like this. We have no idea what's going on, and that's my question right here. Are they gonna go down the trees? What am I gonna see from my front yard? What's he gonna do to my task? Those are my questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Shull, a question for Ms. Mace.
I do have one. When you heard that this was coming, did you seek to try to find information?
Yes.
Or do you get the call to the headquarters?
There was no need to call.
Get your questions answered?
The only people I heard from was you guys, the plan committee sending me out a letter and a paper sign on Shell House Road, they're talking about two paper signs that are fading now to the rain. So finally, I'm across the street from it, and I got a letter from you guys, and I saw the signs, I'm good. There's a lot of elderly people, there's a lot of neighbors that don't own a lot of farming land or have a lot of money, and I don't think they know. I don't think they would be opposed to it, but, you know, if you're coming into somebody's neighborhood, I know back in the days, they'd bread and pies and stuff. They could've sent me one of those pictures and saved me a little strength.
What I'm saying, was it a telephone number on the letter?
No, it was y'all's, I didn't get a letter from them.
I'm talking about the letter that you got. Was it a telephone number?
For the, for Fitzdane County.
But couldn't you have called them, and maybe they could've explained a little more?
Yes.
But why would I call them? I mean, they're not the company. Would they be able to tell you? Would they be able to sit there?
That could probably give you the company's number, so.
Go say it. I don't see why I would have to dig that deep to be a landlord across from this side, when they could've come right across the street and knocked and said, hey. They had this going before the pandemic was going. They could've sent me that, those brochures, and let me see all the, not to worry about the view. I mean, I just feel like, you know, reach out, and there's a lot of people that don't know. I'm not opposing the solar, I'm not opposing Mecklenburg, I'm not opposing it. I'm opposing my new, my residential home. What am I gonna get? And I'd like to know. And again, we don't have internet, so I live in six-four, they must've been over there, the library, McDonald's, the internet. I mean nothing about that.
You live on Shell Horse Road?
No, sir, I live on nine eighty-one Climax Road. I live right across from the property. I own five acres, directly across from Mr. Williams.
Do you know Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Why don't you talk to him?
Why don't you talk to me?
Because I ain't get.
No, sir.
We'll get to you, sir. She has a flow. Thank you. I've got time and control.
I'm a single woman. I don't feel like going over and knocking on people's door. Why should I have to do all, I mean, I think I would look really kind of, can you tell me what you're doing? He's got a sign up there, there's a meeting here. I'm saying the company should've reached out, at least keep the lid around it, and then we wouldn't be here wondering what's going on. I didn't wanna walk across Mr. Williams' house. I don't know them like that. This doesn't look proper.
Were you interested in finding out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You got a letter from the county.
Yes, sir.
If you were interested enough, you could at least one phone call, call the county, and they can explain what's going on, and you knew somewhat?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing. I could've called the county, and they would've, they'd show me those pictures.
This is the reason they put signs up, and you can ask questions, you can see them, and you can call in and ask. That's why they send the letters to the people.
And I understand that, but I didn't get the brochure for showing me how they were gonna.
I understand. I'm just, you know.
And they, I mean, I could've done that. Yeah, I could've done that.
Absolutely.
But I'd rather come here, hear from them, hear from you guys, and see the plans.
Okay.
I would've done a lot of things. A lot of people have done a lot of things.
I understand. I'm just, I'd answer the question. Yeah, I was just asking a question, and that was it. That's fine. That's fine.
After the presentation, Mr. Shull, tonight, have what they presented to us, showing the trees, you say it's trees already there. Are you satisfied with the presentation?
I have no idea what the presentation looks like. That's what I'm saying. I never, all I had to do was put this in there. Just like y'all put your letter, everything, y'all put your letter in. I didn't feel like calling. What could I have done? Have I seen the pictures? No.
But if the trees stayed there, you were satisfied with?
That's fine. I didn't know they were gonna tear down Mr. Williams' house. I had no idea. I don't care. I just wanna know.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Carl Horson, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. We're the only landowners that are really a bit affected by this. This lady here, actually, they're land across the road, her belongs in the Maxi. There's a strip of woods in there that belongs to the name Maxi. So she doesn't have to worry about that being cut right now. I mean, that's, they're not gonna be sold, I was gonna say. Get back to wire onion.
Yes, sir.
We are like thirty-five, the letter that he has is what we wrote. We are like thirty-five or forty-foot lower elevation than this six-two acres. And I've always been in contact with DEQ. I have two sons, engineers. We on top of it. Those folks don't know it yet. DEQ's looking after me. He said not one drop of water can come down through that moor than what's coming presently. He said they'll have to put in control managers. If this road, Shell Horse Road, has four homes on the low end, about four hundred acres of farm. If, uh, this road, Shell Horse Road, has four homes on the low end, about four hundred acres of farm and stuff. And the DEQ people are telling me, take faces, and if you have a problem, they will have to correct. And I'm not opposed to the project, I want you to understand that. I just want to make sure, when you down here looking up, it's like looking up a mountain. I don't know what the angle or the degree is, all that water's got to go somewhere for the toll numbers. That's got to be addressed. And the DEQ people are telling me that if the water's not coming over that road now, they can't allow it to come over when they get there. And I just would like for you to stipulate that if they control the runoff to prevent damage to the neighbors, which is us. And we never got any information on this at all, none, nothing, until Joe put up a sign and we're in. And, and I don't have a problem with that, uh, but this runoff could be serious. Number one, damage to the road. Number two, irrigation bond is just down below that, and if they say there's enough water down through that, that dam was built in nineteen sixty-one, may not take it. Then, and number three, all of this goes to the town Chatham Tranking Water. We less than a mile from it, Robin Fork Rudder Water. So they have got to control that bond, and that's what I'm asking. I'm not opposed to the project, and let me say this to the ODA guy, y'all do one poor damn job.
Easy, ma'am.
We on sixteen hundred.
Sir, you address us, okay?
We on sixteen hundred, we on sixteen hundred fifty acres in South Side, Virginia. Dominion is twenty-five percent less per kilowatt. Appalachian is twenty-eight percent less per kilowatt. Even Central Virginia Electric Co-op is less than Mecklenburg. So they do a poor job of getting this power to us cheaply. I'm telling it like this, I know, we put beetle against beetle. But what I'm saying on this project, we have got to watch this water that's coming off.
Are you, uh, DEQ has told you to document everything, track it for the record?
Yes, sir.
And that way you can turn it in with the DEQ of a complaint, if you have one.
Yes.
Which I don't think you will, but that, we don't know until the project.
He said they haven't got any information on this project at all, and he called today, and he said we don't have anything on it.
Who are we?
DEQ out of Salem.
Out of Salem, who did you talk with that was Salem? Mr. Rock.
And anyhow, he said that state law will not allow more water runoff than what's presently happening. And he said if it is, they got to go back and correct, and so, I'm just telling y'all, that's how.
Sir.
Sir, you address us.
Please address, don't dress them, dress us.
But, but anyhow, that's, that's what we are concerned about, is that water, because if you go there, I mean, it's like this, now, I don't know why they're going to put the solar bounds, maybe they'll put them on the far side, Roger Jefferson will get the runoff, I don't know. I'm just saying that we are concerned about this runoff, Washington, Shell Horse Road, and in turn, we got the irrigation pond, we're concerned about that.
Sir, may I say one thing to you? Like I said, previously, I've been involved with two of them in my district. This is only step one in a lot of steps. They will have to jump through hoops, and this is just getting permission to do it. Now, they've got to jump through hoops and rings with the government, the DEQ, the Environmental Protection Agency, all of those people, they've got to satisfy them, but this is just step one in twenty-five steps they've, they've got to go through. And I'm just saying.
Yeah.
They get permission from us, then the government gets involved.
I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with that, but we have just got to watch this runoff situation. If you were to come back and look, it's two drains coming down through that, it's just like this angle. And I'm not, you know, I'm not hard to get along with, but that has got to be addressed. And another thing too, is going to be the maintenance on the Shell Horse Road. In my lifetime, I've spent close to forty thousand dollars on that road. It's a private road, Joe, his daughter, Jefferson, and us, we all have a private rate in that road. It's private, and, but I've had to maintain it, and, uh, I, it's just, uh, maybe these folks will be willing to take care of it down to the point they quit you.
You might be lucky, you might, they might be the best neighbors you ever had, you never know.
So far, uh, Roger Jefferson has put five loads of ground on it, one year, and another year put three. And ultimately, in the last forty years, I've put every single one on.
Twenty minutes is up, I think his time is up anyway.
Yeah, but this runoff is what I need to be concerned about.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
But like I say, I'm not a pro opposed to.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
That's all I have signed up. Does anyone here wish to address us, if they not have the opportunity to sign up? If not, we're sorry.
I can hear you. I'm sorry?
You ready to come back to rebuttal?
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, I, I will, I can quickly, um, speak to the, the community outreach piece. I, I apologize to, that, that, that you did not receive the package of information. There, I think there may have been a miscalculation in, in the, uh, in the adjacent property owner list. Um, I, I, I thought that we, the, the list that we had, we had sent was approved by the county staff, but maybe, maybe there was a change to that. To, to her point, I, I believe her property is located on, on a parcel of land that, that either does not necessarily, uh, but the project parcel, the, the stand of trees that she's referring to is a separate parcel of land, is not on our project parcel, and, and that may have been where the oversight was, um, as far as the notification. I will say that the, that, that stand of trees is not in our project area. We intend, uh, we do not intend to, to impact those trees as they do provide a, a, a very good natural vegetative screening to the project from Climax Road and the public pathway. Um, as far as the, the runoff, um, I, I may, uh, have, have our consultant speak to some of the details on that situation.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening, Chris Wu, also with Vines Consulting Technologies. Um, it was already mentioned earlier by my colleague that, um, when it comes to your stormwater permitting, if, you know, we will go through the appropriate steps in terms of going to the county and making sure the, um, the design criteria are consistent with the effective accounting of the state. Frankly, all, all those are probably. When it comes to runoff calculations, that'll be part of the package being submitted. Uh, we have to demonstrate pre and post-construction runoff on this site. And, yes, you're correct, there's, there's, I believe there's some allowance for some increase, but it's a small percentage, I'd have to confirm, but, or is it? Okay, my apologies.
Less than equals two.
Okay, less than equals two, but yes, we will have the calculations to demonstrate. Uh, once we have the full layout, we can run the calculations and figure out exactly, you know, will we meet this, this runoff criteria?
What, uh, what plans do you have if, if the calculations turn out, oh, is this on a hundred-year plan, or?
It's not a hundred-year flood plan, no. Um, I'm sorry, between.
I know in construction, I know in construction buildings, they don't have to be a hundred-year site plan over here.
That's it there in the flood plan, this, this project's not the flood plan.
Only in flood plan.
That's right.
This is just water runoff.
Flood plan, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Still going a hundred-year flood plan, we had to build it over DCC. Any other questions?
Um, Karen, I mean, I'm sorry. Emily, I apologize, I used to call Karen because she's in there. Um, as far as the trees, are we still doing, uh, like a Leland Cypress?
Yes.
What size are you talking?
Um, they do have, um, screening requirements that they have to meet, um, and their site plans, there are some gaps in those, so we'll have to go over that, but all, we have final reports built, so.
Good.
Yeah. Any, yeah, so any areas that are not screened, we'll, we'll have to go back.
Deregulation program, you guys, I'm sure have one in place, you know, we, that's a must, that's part of it, so, anyway. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Mr. Wilson, do you have anything else you'd like?
Uh, no, no, I don't, I appreciate your time, and, um, just to follow up on the, the concern over the, the community outreach, um, I'm happy to speak with, with landowners, if we pass along my, my information to, to anyone that may require in the future a project.
Thank you. At eight o'clock, case S dash twenty dash zero five is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese?
This is a big one. Uh, thank you for all the information, both for the residents, for Climax and that area. Anytime there's a new change in our lives, we're always concerned, um, and that's when we do try to find answers, if we can answer since we can. And I'm confident that this company would have provided an in-house community, um, program for all of us, it's been caused of COVID-19, it's been a lot of inconveniences for all of us to deal with. Um, I think Mr. Gordon has done the best he could do, very informative, gave us a lot of information, brought his coworkers with him to answer the questions that maybe they knew better for, better than me. Um, this is in my district, Mecklenburg has served our area for a number of years, and I'm truly happy that we are getting this in our district for the first time. It will serve, as he said, four hundred homes, and I have heard approximately serving eight hundred and seventy-five people. That was what I thought I remembered on the webinar. I just want this understood, this is a preliminary, this is, has been said tonight, this is the beginning of many meetings, of many regulations. Mr. Parsons was, had some deep concerns, but I'm sure that this company is willing to, and will have to, be mandated, that they will have to follow the mandated rules. Uh, the solar is clean electricity, it's quiet, it's going to provide many things for the community. Uh, it demand, it demands no, uh, county infrastructure, it's going to be maintained, it has to be. It's going to have buffers, trees that will clear the site if anybody's concerned about the site of it, that's usually a big concern. Um, and there will be jobs for the community, as he just said, and boy, do we need those. And there will be screening plans, as Ms. Rags said just there. So, Mr. Chairman, in case A, S dash twenty dash zero zero five, under the recommendation of this special use permit request, be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Before, before you do that, there's a list of conditions in your hacking. Um, if you would like to add those, you will need to say, um, as presented. I will note that if you would like them to change the screening or the fence requirements from chain link to what they're proposing, you will need to amend number four fencing to take out, um, chain link in the proposed conditions.
Actually, I'm sorry, uh, real quick, the, uh, an additional change that's reflected in our request, or change that's reflected in our application, is, um, there is an anometer pole that's required to wind the weather on site. It exceeds fifteen feet, but it would be less than thirty feet, and we couldn't really fit it into the listed condition language, where it lists, um, other, otherwise required by, um, electrical codes or otherwise required. Um, we weren't sure if that would fit in anywhere, and we decided to ask if that would be, um, an acceptable change. So on number two, on the height conditions, uh, the proposed, um, the, so this is actually, I have to write and need to.
What, you're talking about fifteen feet, equivalent to fifteen feet?
Uh, just for the, uh, the weather station on number two, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, I said.
It's a single pole that has a weather station on it, so that they will know what the weather is. That pole will exceed the fifteen feet.
Oh, okay.
But not thirty, is that correct? Not thirty feet, it's a single pole.
Uh, we, we, the redlined version of the conditions that we just handed also addressed the, the fixed, just added some language to say either chain link fence or fixed, not agricultural fence, just so that we're.
Should we, should we table this to the next meeting, let them get with Ms. Rags there, we get all this stuff, so we know what we're voting on, like the chain link fence?
We can change it, we can.
About the DEQ?
We can change it right now.
Yes.
To reflect our recommendation, we can change it right now. You can say with the stipulation that chain link fence be the only option, and then the Board of Zoning Appeals will go from that.
That, that is the conditions we recommend, staff recommends.
Okay.
That we draw up.
And the pole, and the pole?
That's all.
We're definitely here with these things at the last minute, I'm not exactly.
Well, the maximum height in an A1 is forty feet.
Yeah, so you're, you're well within, you're well within, you allow a height within A1. The maximum height for a structure in A1 is going to be forty feet, so if they don't exceed thirty feet, you would be fine, and we do allow, um, collection yards and substations, um, to exceed that fifteen feet, so this would not be out of the ordinary for us.
And this can be added into our recommendation as we make a motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you would just need to.
Absolutely.
The conditions, the changes. If you would like to allow that type of fencing, you would need to remove the chain link from the conditions. Um, and then you would also need to, um, in number two, except for the weather station poles, um, add that.
Okay.
Language.
Not to, to, to.
Right.
And if it can be done on her motion with all of that, I'm good, you know?
I'm, I'm good if, if it can be done.
Yes, yes.
If it's in the question, what's the rush?
Right, yeah.
We just wait one more month, have it all presented, give us time to look at it, first time we saw this tonight.
And the letter from, from Mr. Parsons.
And I think Mr. Parsons got a legitimate from past experience, not with solar panels, but with another type of utility. I know exactly what he's talking about with DEQ. If it's not pictures made, that's the only thing, save me, that I have, of course, that's going to be Board of Zoning Appeals.
There again, this is only step one.
Yeah, I think.
In a bunch of steps.
But we didn't receive it over the horn until we walk in here tonight, that's what, that's what I don't understand.
Okay.
Is why we only got it five minutes.
It's in the conditions?
Number nine.
Okay, okay.
Then vote.
Yeah, if it's in the conditions and we can add the rest to it, um, you're not going to have anyone else hanging out there, do you? Other we need to add, okay, I, I'm.
Mr. Chairman, you, you direct this board.
Mm-hmm.
If you're not comfortable with what's been presented on the table, if we can do that, I don't know whether we can hear it another month, it's a, if you.
I say that, if we can get all of this in the motion correctly, send it to Board of Zoning Appeals and let them make the decisions, they're the ones that, that issue the permit. We just make recommendations.
Yeah.
I think we have brought out, though, I cannot understand why it had to be presented to us five minutes before the meeting, that's, that I do not understand.
And how do y'all feel deeply about the chain fence? I know previously all the solar companies have had chain fences. Do you want to make an exception for this? Does it matter?
If you start making one exception, when the next man comes...
I agree with that.
How are you going to do? If we're going to have an ordinance, we're going to go by something? We should go by what they count.
Chain link fence is what's in the ordinance. That's it.
The, the conditions are in the book.
Yeah.
If you want to look at them.
But in the one they submitted, it's and/or, if I heard him correctly. Is it not Emily? I mean, Ms. Ragsdale?
There's three, um, fencing for the project will either, will be either standard chain link or...
Either/or.
Okay.
We can change that.
You can.
Let's go chain link. I mean, how are you going to explain to the company next month? If we have one come before us? And you gave it to him while...
Yeah, you set precedence if you're changing.
Yes, sir.
And if they agree to either/or, then, then, you know, if we require chain link, let's do change.
Can, can we, can I add, would be helpful to add one?
Sir, we done closed the public hearing. We in our discussion. I'm, I'm sorry, but I have closed.
That's all right.
Thank you. As I said, I cannot understand why we only found out about all of this five minutes before we opened the meeting. As a matter of fact, I think it's two and a half minutes before we got the package.
It was.
Change in motion.
You're going to change your motion then, too?
We want to change the weather pole not to exceed thirty feet. We want to change it to read chain fence.
Chain link?
Chain link.
Chain link? Yes, ma'am?
And six feet tall.
That's what your, that's what your conditions already state.
Okay. Yes.
So, the only one that you would need to change would be the height at the pole.
Okay. Yes. We're not going to do either/or. We'll do chain link and boom, that's it. If it's in our ordinance. That's already in there. Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If you look at all the, uh, proposed permit conditions, it's right there. It says standard chain link.
Yep.
At six foot height.
Right. And they sign, they sign that they agree, they received this. Is that correct? It's in our package that they...
Yes, but you are responsible for setting their conditions. So, they do not have to agree to the conditions. That is solely on the board.
Any more questions?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Dudley, recommend to the Board of, uh, zoning appeals, uh, case S dash twenty dash zero five, a special use permit for a utility scale solar energy facility be issued. Any more discussions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, do you call the robe?
With, with the conditions?
With the conditions.
Yes.
Amendmented conditions, yes, as in the board.
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes. Thank you for correcting us.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stud?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case S dash twenty dash zero five, by motion of eight, four, and zero, yes, recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals a special use permit for a utility scale, scale solar energy facility be issued with the conditions. Thank y'all. At eight fourteen, public hearings open for the proposed revisions of Pitts Bay County Code, Chapter thirty-five, Division ten, Business District General B two, Section thirty-five dash three sixty-five, permitted uses, Section thirty-five dash three sixty-six, special use permits, Section thirty-five dash three seventy-five, and the other regulatory, Section thirty-five dash three fifty-six. Ms. Ragsdale?
Um, I believe some of this was left out of your packet, so you do have the red line, um, versions of both V one and V two. We are proposing that in V one, um, amusement centers, game rooms, electronic games, game machines, and machine arcades are already required under special use. So, we are proposing that under other regulations, Section thirty-five dash, um, three five six, that we add the definition of electronic gaming establishment. Um, and what that will do is any, um, any establishment that has three or more electronic gaming machines within the definition of electronic gaming establishment and would be required to meet these additional regulations before they can even apply for a special use permit and come before you. Um, but they, if they are able to meet these additional, um, regulations, they would be able to apply for a special use permit. That would then give you the opportunity to apply additional conditions if you saw fit. For V two, we are proposing to move amusement centers, game rooms, electronic games, game machines, um, machine arcades, and amusement shops from permitted uses um, to special use, permitted by special use permit. Um, and then add the exact same language for electronic gaming establishments under other regulations of that section as well.
Any more questions?
I, I just want to comment about, I guess, my motion sometime back, uh, came back to haunt us a little bit because if I understand it correctly, the ones that are in place now will not have to, they're grandfathered, for lack of a bad expression.
Correct.
Okay. That being said, how about the ones that may be grandfathered? How, how close are we going to be looking at those folks because they out there?
So, it will be their, they are obligated to prove to us that they were in operation before this was adopted. Um, so the ones that we do know that have come to our office and they have gone through, um, the process of, um, a change of use, um, to assembly, they will be grandfathered under this. However, if they have not completed that process by the time that this is adopted, they will be required to have a special use because they will not be operating legally.
I, I understand that, but how about the ones that are, I mean, they, they supposedly met the criteria that are still not meeting these guidelines? Is, is somebody going to go back and, and, and look at that or are they, are they grandfathered? If they got, what is it, you know, so many parking places and, and this type thing, they're going to have so many machines? I, I know for a fact that a couple of them are, are not doing, I mean, it's not there. Are they going to be?
If they operate legally when this is adopted, meaning they have come through our office, they've gotten a change of use for their current location, they have met all of our requirements prior to the adoption of this, there is nothing that we can do to make them go back and meet these regulations. However, if they have not completely gone through that process, once this is adopted, they will be required. So, any that have not, are not operating legally when this is adopted, yes, we will go back and they will have to come through and meet all these conditions.
I guess, well, I said I would apologize for, for my motion back a month or so ago. I just, I, I was almost under the impression that everybody, and I don't know how many of you realize, the governor struggled with that thing until the ninth hour to completely abolish it. And it's only good for one year, am I correct?
Correct.
And they're going, they're going to cancel it next year. So, we're going to put up with it for one year, but I, I made that motion to...
That's right.
I've got a question. Have we gotten guidelines from the ABC? The alcohol is going to control this? The alcohol board's going to be controlling this? Have, have we received guidelines from them of what they're...
The last time I spoke with them, they were still receiving guidance. Um, the, the governor's legislation states that, um, they must be in operation with an active ABC license by July one in order to continue operating. Um, and it also states that they are only allowed the number of game, gaming machines listed on that license as of July one. So, our interpretation of that is if you do not have an ABC license as of July one, you will not be able to open and operate. Um, and if you, you will not be able to add any additional machines than you have on your license as of July one. However, um, this will cover us in the future if there are any additional loopholes or anything that are found, that's found in that legislation or if the governor were to go back at the end of that year and not, um, close that loophole that they're operating under now. So, this will just protect us in the future.
The ones, I'm thinking about twenty-nine business, uh, out of, south of Danville. I mean, north of Danville. Uh, if they are operating and doesn't have ABC, uh, license, they cannot even be grandfathered in under the, the new governor guidelines. Is that correct?
That is our understanding.
That is correct.
That's the way I understand it.
That's good. I'm glad. Because I mean, a couple of them is just unreal.
We just want to make sure that we, we have what, what we need in place to regulate any in the future if, if this issue were to come up again.
Okay. Any more questions for her before I call for, we have, I think somebody wants to talk, speak like this?
No, she's...
She's, she's here in case you had any, if you had some questions about taxation on the machines when we spoke previously with the score. She's at Commission of Revenue, so she's here to answer any, any questions if you have any.
Like twelve hundred on each machine each month?
Can you, can you give us a guideline? I mean, what, what is the county receiving now? And how is the commi, is the commission revenue, are they taxing the...
Well, good evening.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Um, currently, as my office, we can only assess what was there on January one. So, like many of them came after January one. So, as of January one, we had six locations. And so, we are assessing ninety-five machines for this year, for this tax year of 2020. Because our tax base is January one. So, if they were not in operation on January one, I could not touch them until next year if they're still there on January one.
So, could they add machines from, at, on January second and pull them out on December thirtieth?
Yes, they can. Because I can only assess...
That's just the sneaky side of me thinking. Yeah.
I'm thinking about doing my logging equipment.
That's right.
Accounting books, sending them to school.
Just saying.
But, the good thing, like she said, affected you like first. You know, you can't add any that's not already on your license.
Right.
You can get rid of them, and I can't tax them, but you can't add any legally anyway.
Well, I don't have any anyways. I'm good with it.
How, how often do you think y'all would check?
Well, I can really, I can check anytime during the year, but it doesn't really matter. It's basically, it, this is wherever they are on January one.
Right.
I, I understand someone's talking about, if, if you didn't check until December, they might move them out before you, before January the first, that's...
That's true. And if they do, it's nothing, I, I still can't tax it. If it's not there on January one, I can't touch it. A statement.
That's a loophole.
And you said there was ninety-five currently in the county that, that you're aware of that are taxed for...
Ninety-five machines.
Ninety-five machines.
So, there are just more.
Okay.
There's a lot more now.
These, these little quinky pies.
There are ninety-five machines in the county.
Okay. Does the, does the ABC communicate with, with the county at all? Are they regulating in any way?
They just come on board.
So, you're, you're relying on self-reporting, just like regular property tax?
I had a business audit, but I lost it to the Sheriff's Department. So, I'll, I'll be hiring somebody to replace him, but he went out and audited these businesses.
I got you.
And so, that's how we did pick up most of these that we did have.
You did look at Jim?
It'd be a good job. It'd be a good job.
So, is Marvin, uh, who's going to lease these places to make sure children are underage, different school? I mean, that's probably, I know it's not you, but don't you have to be a certain age to play those?
Eighteen.
I mean, actually eighteen.
Eighteen, yes.
Is that going to be up to the owner or?
I would think so because if, if somebody was there illegally, then...
He could have his license revoked if he's caught. If some, you know, if you walked in and saw somebody, obviously, they were twelve years old.
You know, the ABC board would... Give a sign to you. I'm not sure. Because like she said, they're still in discussions about...
Will they have to come and get a license to operate these machines? Or do they just go through the ABC and the county does not know anything about?
So, currently, um, under zoning classification V one, you do, they are required to have a special use permit. So, they're supposed to be coming before the board, um, in order to operate. However, most of them have been in V two zoning. That is then permitted by right. So, that is why we were requesting to move that from permitted uses to special use permits to close that, that loophole for them.
So, it's a loophole. They could operate without anybody knowing anything about it right now. I mean, once we do this, come...
And we, we require, building code requires that unless it is the prior use of that building was an assembly use, that they do have to go through our office and do a change of use. Um, so, we are currently getting them on that because most of where they're over, opening has been operating as an office or something along those lines. So, we are requiring them that they do a change of use to an assembly use. Um, so, they do have to do some upgrades to their, their buildings and things like that, but that is the only regulation currently that we have.
So, is there a limit to how many future staff should get that?
Um, the occupancy load of that building would dictate that, but other than that, no. Not currently. Um, those would be things that we could address. If they come to you with a special use permit, we would, um, encourage you to address things like that through conditions. Um, and staff has, has come up with, um, some pro, proposed conditions. I believe they were in the memo that was originally sent to you regarding this, um, that we would recommend that you impose on any.
I finally understand you're right. We, we're not checking up on them. We rely on what they give us, information, the businesses?
Currently, um, so...
But she's not going to get any more help.
Well, if we require them to get a special use permit, we know that they're operating and that helps her track them better. Um, currently, if they're just permitted by right, they can open since we don't require a business license, they can open and start operating with as many machines as they want to. Our office doesn't know that they're in operation. Her office doesn't know that they're in operation, so it's been very hard for us to track them. Um, but this would, this would help that greatly.
Okay. Because I know we, we pass rules and make laws and things, but don't hire anybody to, to keep them up. And the people that already have got work, it's got a load. Can you add daddy into that load? You know?
This would fall under our office, so we would be required to enforce this.
And they're not going to, not going to give you any help either.
Is it...
I'd ask my office to notify my office.
Is there anything you can add or present to us that would help?
Me?
Yes, the, your, your department, your commission of revenue, I mean...
Um, no, like you said, Emily and I have had a conversation about this and, um, I just asked that, you know, if somebody comes to her office and inquires now, you know, about opening one or, and they say, you know, they're going to do it, then she sends it to my office or either their office, so we can know that they're out there and I can look at them on January one next year. So, you know, we are, we plan to work together, so, you know.
How you going to find it, the people who opens up illegally? You take me, I'm up there in the countryside, and yes, house is mile away, you know, and if I put all these machines in my basement and have people coming in...
Somebody will complain.
No, they won't. Now, now, it ain't going to be quick enough. I can pick up a lot of money.
She used to make movies.
I was waiting on that.
Well...
He didn't answer, did he?
I mean, I appreciate that. And I'm sure the other commissioners do.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Any, anybody else, any of... Eight twenty-nine, public hearings closed.
Thank you, Emily.
It's grueling. Oh, boy.
You may... Entend that motion?
That's good.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Hawke.
There you go.
Recommend to the, uh, Board of... Recommend to the Board of Supervisors...
Do we go to the House?
That the proposed revisions of the Pittsman County Code, and I'm not going to read all of those, y'all can type that in. Catch your camera. Any more discussions? Not Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the room?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
By a vote of eight, four, zero against, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the proposed revision for Pittsman County Code, Chapter thirty-five, Division ten, and the rest of it be permitted. Any old business? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know what our load looks like for the next couple of months. I will not be here for life, may not be here all the time, having total need of replacement every week, so I want to be recuperating hopefully very well.
You going to be at home, or you going to be laid up a while in the hospital, or...
Twenty-three hours in the hospital, we hope, and the rest of the time at home.
June and July?
I won't be here for July, may not be here all, just depending on, I personally think I will be...
We wish the operation be successful. Our prayers are with you. If there's anything we can do, please give us a call.
I'll cut your bread if you want to.
I said, is there anything we could do for you? Meetings adjourned, eight thirty-one. Thank y'all. Be safe.